I have sound. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Meeting for the date of February 6th, and let's start with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Seal.
Here.
Commissioner McCarville.
Here.
Commissioner Grove.
Here.
Commissioner Pittsir.
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Cassinelli.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I don't have any changes. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Is it moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same. Motion passes. So before we go forward, I want to take the opportunity to welcome our two new commissioners, Nick Grove and Patty Pittsir. If you guys want to take an opportunity to introduce yourselves to the, our audience, our commission, and all those on the wonderful screen at home, just say hello, and if you want to say anything about yourself, or your experience, or your excitement about being on the commission, we would really appreciate it. Nick, if you want to start?
I am Nick Grove. Excited to be on this for the next few years. Really looking forward to taking some of the experiences that I learned being a part of the Comprehensive Steering Committee, and excited to see all the things that come in front of this commission, so.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Pittsir, you want to say hello, ma'am?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Patricia Pittsir. I recently retired, been in Meridian for 28 years, and I'm looking forward to this new opportunity.
We appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We only have one item on the agenda, which is the, or on the consent agenda, which is approve the minutes of January 16th, 2020, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same. Thank you. And at this time, I will explain the public hearing process for this evening. We will open each item individually and then start with a staff report. The staff will report their findings regarding how the application adheres to our Comprehensive Plan and in Uniform Development Code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for the approval of their application, and respond to any comments from the staff, and the applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant has finished, we will open the floor to public testimony. There's an iPad in the back. If you want to wish to speak on a specific application, please make sure you sign up on that application in the back, and you will have three minutes to present your comments to the commission. Is there anyone here representing an HOA tonight? Okay, so we'll skip that piece. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to have an opportunity to respond to public testimony, and then close the discussion. And at that time, we will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will have a chance to deliberate, and hopefully make a recommendation to City Council on certain applications tonight, and then approve others. So with that, I will turn to our wonderful staff, if they've gotten over technical difficulties, maybe? Yes, smiling, and start with our first public hearing, which is for Quality Inn and Suites, file number H2019-0140. Sonya, we'll start with you in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The first application before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit. This site is Zoned CG and is located at 1575 South Meridian Road, on the west side of South Meridian Road, south of the I-84 off-ramp. The Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation on this property is commercial. A conditional use permit is requested to reinstate the non-conforming status of the sign for Quality Inn and Suites with changes to the sign that are not consistent with the standards listed in the UDC. The applicant is proposing to install a new sign cabinet, shown on the right, on the existing sign structure, shown on the left, that is 244 square feet, with a height of 50 feet, with no changes to the area at the base of the sign. The reason for the change is for rebranding purposes of the business. The proposed sign exceeds the maximum 40-foot-tall height and 150-foot square, square feet, excuse me, background area, and is not set within a landscaped area, having at least the same square footage as the background area of the sign, as currently required by the UDC. No landscaping exists at the base of the sign, as you can see there. If this request is not approved, excuse me, if for these reasons it is considered a non-conforming sign, and as such, a conditional use permit is required to reinstate the status of the sign. If this request is not approved, the applicant would still be allowed to change the copy area and/or repaint the existing sign, provided that the sign or sign structure is not altered in any way. Although the proposed sign is not consistent with current UDC standards, it does lessen the existing nonconformity of the sign by reducing the background area of the existing sign by more than half, and the site, excuse me, the height of the sign by eight feet four inches. For this reason, staff is amenable to the applicant's request, however recommends as a condition of approval that the design of the sign include decorative elements that are more aesthetically pleasing than just a rectangular cabinet. This is a recommendation only, and it's not a requirement of the UDC. Staff recommends the applicant work with staff on a more appealing design for the site. Written testimony has been received from Cole Fisher, Persona Signs, Rachel Worley, Choice Hotels. They are not in agreement with staff's recommendation to add decorative elements to the sign. Staff is recommending approval with the aforementioned condition. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for staff? At this time, Commissioner Seal.
Just a quick question, as far as the improvements that is to the sign itself, not the surrounding area or below the sign, nothing along those lines?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Chairman, yes, it's just the sign on top.
Additional questions? So before being the applicant up, just for Commissioner Grove and Commissioner Pittsir, this is a conditional use permit, so we will be the approving body. So this is not a recommendation to City Council, we're the, we're it. So final decision lies with the commission. So with that, would the applicant like to come forward in behalf of the application, or applicant? Gentlemen, thank you for being here with us tonight. Please state your names and your addresses to the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. I'm Terry Brown with Lydell Sign Company, resides at 27 the East Commercial Street here in Meridian, Idaho.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Mitchell. I'm with Quality Inn and Suites, located at 1575 South Meridian Road.
Thank you, guys. Please proceed.
We've got a very unique situation here with a rebranding process. Mr. Sandman has been in Meridian for
Thirty years.
Thirty years. They recently sold to the Choice Hotel chain, and obviously wanted to rebrand. We've been in the process for eight months
Yes.
on trying to get a sign up for their location. What we end up doing is basically taking and blacking out the top portion of the sign, and stringing a banner over, so they would have some type of branding for the last six, five months.
Yes.
We realized that it was nonconforming based on current standards today, okay? We went back with the sign manufacturer, me being the subcontractor, for Choice Hotels, and came up with a plan to compromise, if you will, on the height and the background area. We think it's very important that, number one, they get branding out there right now. As it is, they have no night illumination, and as you all know, on that particular property, you've got hundreds of thousands of cars up and down that freeway. Basically, the sign is visible from the daytime only. We have no nighttime exposure. We looked at the recommendation provided by staff. We sent it off. There, I believe you all should have a copy of the letter from Persona stating safety concerns. There also was a letter in the packet from Choice Hotel talking about their branding, as well as comments from Tom as the general manager over here. I would just like to say, looking at the signs in the vicinity, north of their location, there appears to be similar signs, whether it be rectangular or square. We just don't know what decorative elements that they are wanting, we're willing to listen, but at this point in time, any decorative elements are going to go against the branding of Choice Hotels. If it's something that we need to add some landscaping to the base, the entire base is a parking lot area with a concrete pad. So the plan will have to endure some costs associated with that, if that would be a compromise. So that is all I'd like to speak. Tommy, would you like to speak on your behalf?
Yes, like Mr. Brown said, we're willing to do whatever's necessary to make this happen, and please the staff, the commission, anybody involved. So we may rebrand and get exposure for our hotel as it is. A big financial impact on us right now to not have, attract evening travelers from the I-84.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
You mentioned there were some safety concerns. Could you expand on what those safety concerns would be about, adding other decorative elements?
Yeah, you're, if you look at the slide that's up on the left side, the existing sign, it's basically a double cabinet, which consists of two cabinets. The top cabinet is an old fluorescent illuminated cabinet, okay, which is bolted on to the top of the rectangular cabinet, okay? To do what we want to do, we have to take that top cabinet off, okay? It's been there for, gosh, we've been working on it as a company since Lydell Signs has been in Meridian for the past 11 years. So there are some safety concerns with leaving that up there, and plus it goes against the branding for choice of how they want their signs to look.
If I may elaborate, I did speak to the staff regarding what decorative elements they wanted, and they, it stated that they wanted that top piece to remain. So that's where the safety concern came, is if we left that top roof-looking piece, that's where the safety concern was at.
Follow-up? Go right ahead, ma'am.
A follow-up question. So in the proposed sign that you're putting up there, would you be replacing both elements of the cabinets that are existing with a completely new one, or would you be keeping the bottom cabinet and just removing the top structure?
Removing the top structure, keeping the pole intact, basically the footing. There will be some additional fabrication work, if you will, that'll have to remain for that bottom cabinet. That bottom cabinet now is neon, okay? Originally, that sign was designed to be fluorescent. Years ago, we went in as a company and converted it from fluorescent to neon, okay? We had to take the skins off the cabinet, basically, build new channel letters, refabricate that to it. So right now, we're, we're working with a converted twice sign. So we want to definitely take the, the top cabinet off. All the letters will come off, the skins will come off. We'll have to add some additional structure. Then also, we're putting LEDs back in for the cost efficiency and the lighting efficiency as well. And then the new cabinet will then be refaced.
One more follow-up question, if I may.
Go right ahead.
So when you're adjusting the, the main cabinet, is there the ability to put a different kind of decorative element around that square box, rather than the existing structure? You can take that piece off. Is there something else you could put on the top that would give it a little bit more texture and diversity?
I would have to defer to Tom, because all's I have is a letter that Choice sent regarding their signage and their branding. So, Tom, I would have to defer.
Yeah, so as a, as a franchisee, the franchisor would not allow us to put anything on the top of it. It needs to be one piece, whether it's square, rectangular, whatever it may be. I mean, if, if we want to, if it's requested that we do a square, we'll be happy to do a square. If we need to replace the pole, we'll be happy to replace the pole if those are, if we feel those are not aesthetically pleasing.
Additional questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
Can you tell me, it looks, I can't tell if it's just different lighting on that picture, but is your intent to paint the poles as well?
Yes.
Make them all one color?
Yeah, the current structure is two different colors, if you will. There's a graduation, and by that, you have a larger pole at the base, and it reduces down to a smaller size that then goes into the cabinet itself. There's actually a plate there, and our intent is to make that all one color. There is one other element right at the base of the cabinet that looks like, but it is part of that cabinet. I mean, if, if we needed to paint that to, to give it some contrast, we'd be happy to do that. Tommy mentioned a new cabinet. Again, we're at the mercy of the, of the Choice franchise with a, you know, significant dollar amount.
Additional questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
One more question. I know, I've driven through this a lot a few times, and I know at the bottom of the sign where the curb kind of goes around it, you can see it in the picture, that there's a few damaged pieces of that curb that go around the sign. Would you be willing to help fix some of those issues, so that it looked more cohesive on the?
This is actually an older picture, and the curbing has been replaced since this picture was taken. There's all, all of that area where it's cracked and broken is brand-new curbing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pittsir, go ahead.
Thank you. So is the sign that you're proposing here, this rectangle sign, is that the sign that's on all Quality Inns and Suites? Is that the branding itself?
It's pretty, pretty close. Some have square sign, square cabinets versus rectangle, but that is the standard Quality Inn signage, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Gentlemen, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonya, they're wandering back. Is there any, was there any discussion around alternative compliance? I mean, I know that we, whether that's landscaping or those kinds of things around the sign, was that a discussion you had?
Chairman, members of the commission, no, because of its nonconforming status, it's not a requirement
Got it.
now.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who's signed up to testify?
Mr. Chair, no one's signed up for this.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify in this application? Going once, going twice? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
I move to close the public hearing on H-2019-0140.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H-2019-0140. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same. Mission, the application is properly before you. Do you have comments, thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
I actually like the clean lines of the proposed, what's on the proposed picture with painting the solid color. I would like to see the landscaping and upgrading at the base, even though I know they said the curbing's been done. I think the more development that comes around there, I know what's next door might, just to clean that up a little bit, make it look a little fresh, but other than that, I, I don't mind the top parts coming off.
Additional comments? Commissioner Seal.
Mr. Chair, I'm in agreement with just cleaning up the base of it. I mean, like they said, the, the curbing itself has been fixed, but just a little bit of beautification to that to add to it. But I agree, I think, I mean, the sign is pretty standard. It would be nice to see something up there that would be a little more uniquely Meridian, but we can't have that on every sign. So it's nice, this one's actually coming down a little bit. So, I mean, it's coming more into conformance, so hopefully it'll continue in that direction. But it's got to be seen from the freeway, so.
And I get the, I agree with you. I tend to get, I get that there's a need, definitely, to be seen from the freeway. The challenge is it's a, it's a nonconforming sign, and it always brings all, all kinds of other fun with it. I do appreciate that it's shrinking. So that's a good thing. But I, it's one of those things, I think we could make it less billboardy, but I understand the challenges they're up against, too. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I know staff's recommendation was to have the applicant work with staff on a more appealing design for the sign. They wanted to see a little bit more architectural design around the top, so it wasn't just a straight, straight rectangle. We could certainly make a recommendation that they work with staff to see if they can come up with something that would be appropriate for Quality Inn and Suites. And I'm not sure how you condition that, if, if they can't come to some sort of agreement, that we would still let them go forward with it, but just a thought. I'm, I'm not opposed to cleaning up the sign, shrinking the space. I think it'd be nice to see a little more landscaping cleaned up down there, but just a thought.
Chairman Fitzgerald.
Yep.
Having been a franchisee owner myself at one time, I understand the problems that they're going to face if they go against their franchise agreement on signage. It's, it's nice that it's, it's smaller. They can add some contrast for us, and I appreciate that fact. But, and they're going to LEDs and getting rid of the neon. I think all of those are positives.
I appreciate your perspective as a former franchisee. That's, appreciate that. Commissioner Grove, any thoughts? It'll make you talk all the time unless you want to.
I agree with what everyone's said so far. I like the fact that it'll be reduced in height from what it is currently. And I too would like to see if there could be some landscaping at the base, or something to break up that monotony. And I think that would help just around the base of the sign, but overall, I like the fact of it shrinking.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I'm formulating on a
On a motion?
On a motion here. So, I mean, just to reiterate, I mean, essentially, I'm in agreement that if we could add something in to work with the staff, to provide colors and landscaping that will add more contrast, is that, I mean, I don't want to paint anybody into a corner. But at the same time, I think there's something that, you know, I mean, it could use a little more.
Something.
Lack of better terminology. And the more is something I don't want to, I'm, you know, I'm not a designer myself, so it's kind of interesting, you know, to go through this, to go through this and try and figure out the proper wording that's going to get at what we're trying to do, which is, you know, get a little bit more substance to the sign, a little more contrast to the sign, without denying it altogether.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
One other thought to add to your motion, just for consideration. Perhaps just offering that the applicant make a reasonable attempt to explore if there's any decorative elements they can add to the top of the sign to consider with staff, but if, if they can't come to a reasonable agreement, that we'd be okay with it. I don't know how to frame that, but that's the best wording I can come up with.
It is. And I, well, I think, and I appreciate where you're going, and I do appreciate the need for the franchisee to do what they need to do for their company. So, and they need to have advertising out there, based on where they are, and I know that sign's been there for a long time, ever since I can remember, so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, if I may.
Welcome back.
Yep, thank you, thank you. Glad to be here. Glad you're all still here.
We're multiplying while you're gone.
When Sonya and I were working on the staff report, really, she, she wrote it, but I had the comment that, you know, if we're going to approve, continue a nonconforming sign, we want something that's nicer for the community. That's not an unreasonable request. I mean, that's what a conditional use permit is, is to get something more, allows you the purview to get something better, other than what code allows for. In discussing the proposal with the applicant, this is a one-dimensional drawing. I don't know exactly what that's going to look like in, in reality. But I was asking if there was an opportunity to, again, just kind of clarifying the record, it was never staff's intention to leave the Mr. Sandman cabinet on top. That's something that they offered up. We don't, we don't think that needs to stay on top of that sign. It, it won't blend in with what they're trying to do. Sometimes less is more in design, but I think the commission has some good ideas. Landscaping will help. I'm glad to hear that the curbing is repaired as well. But the intent was to, just to have some kind of cornice detail on the top, like the Walmart sign just down the road. There's some kind of cornice around it, just kind of gives it a little bit more reveal, a little more dimensional at the top of the sign, not adding a real, doesn't really change the aesthetic of the sign that much. It just gives it more depth, as you, as we're looking for. The other thing that we could look at is whether or not, I like, I appreciate that the applicant is wanting to use LED lighting. I think that does make a sign look modern and new. So I think that will contribute to the look of the sign in the evening particularly. But if there's an opportunity to maybe make those letters on the cabinet sign itself, if those could be three-dimensional, or as they're pressing the new copy in there, if there's a way to at least make those pop off of that a little bit, that, that's a way to get some change, or, you know, make those
Some texture relief.
Yes, you can, you can do that, rather than just it being a flat panel. Maybe there's a way that they can have those pop or stand out, a way pushed out from the cabinet there, and make it look like it's a three-dimensional lettering versus just all on the same plane and, and monochromatic. But it's just some thoughts out there. I think we have some good ideas this evening. I don't want you to give a loosey-goosey condition. If you feel adamant that you just want to give them flexibility, I'd just say, just let them go forward with what they're proposing. Don't try to, don't try to work it so much that give us flexibility to work with them. Appreciate that. But again, staff has this recommendation. We want some more. If you feel like there'll be a violation of that branding, and you feel that that's not appropriate, and that additional landscaping serves that purpose, then go ahead and include that in your motion. Staff's feelings won't be hurt either way.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Comments following that feedback? Commissioner Seal, did you have any thoughts? I think what Bill's saying, I think that can be done relatively, I mean, I'm not a sign maker, but I think you could do some, some kind of pop-out or some kind of relief on the flat, so it's not a flat billboard.
I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Um, motions are always in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Seal.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of City Council, recommend, recommend approval to the City Council of file number H-219-
Or just approval.
We're not recommending to City Council, this is approval.
You are, you're approving.
Recommend approval, sorry, of file H-219-2019-0141, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of February 6th, 2020, with the following modifications, that they work with the staff to provide colors and landscaping that will add more contrast, as well as provide for a more decorative design that will also comply with the franchise requirements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, file number H-2019-0140, with some modifications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same. Motion passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here tonight. Okay, so I'm, Madam Attorney, I'm going to hand the good reins of our meeting over tonight. I have a guest in the back of the room that needs me to take him to an event tonight, so I'm going to hand the reins of the meeting over to our very able vice chair, so she can take the rest of the meeting over. And Commissioner Holland, Madam Chair, I'm going to step away, and that you all have a wonderful rest of the evening. I'm sorry I can't stay for the next adventure, but thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
See you next time. With that, we'll open up the public hearing for Gray Cliff Estates Subdivision, H-2019-0129, and begin with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The next application before you is a request for a preliminary plat. There is also a development agreement modification application that's been requested concurrently. The commission is not a recommending body on the development agreement modification, however, you may insert your, your comments if you wish. This site consists of 52.46 acres of land. It's Zoned R8 and R40, and it's located southwest of West Harris Street and South Meridian Road, State Highway 69. Adjacent land uses and zoning, there are existing and future single-family residential homes, Zoned R4, R8, and R15. This property was annexed back in 2015, and a preliminary plat was approved for 120 buildable lots. A subsequent preliminary plat was approved in 2018, which increased the number of buildable lots to 136. This entitlement is still valid. Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation for this property is medium-density residential. The applicant is requesting a modification to the existing development agreement to increase the number of single-family residential building lots from 136 to 200, and the qualified open space is substantially the same, from 8.85 to 8.97 acres. The number of multifamily buildable lots and apartments- The number of multifamily buildable lots and apartments are proposed to stay the same at 224 units respectively. Other minor modifications to the development agreement are noted in Section 8A of the staff report. The previous gross density, excuse me, let me back up just a minute here. I forgot to show this when I was referencing the 2015 preliminary plat. Where we started at is on the left, and then the amended or new preliminary plat in 2018 is on the right. This showed a few more building lots. The previous gross density of the single-family residential portion of the development was 3.23 units per acre compared to 4.9 units per acre currently proposed. This is the proposed preliminary plat before you. The density of the multifamily portion is the same at 14.18 units per acre. The proposed increase in density is still consistent with that desired in the medium-density residential future land use map designation. The previous development phase included a 1,720 linear foot segment of the city's 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway in a linear open space area where the Northwest Williams Northwest Pipeline is located, which bisects the site. Children's play structure and yard shuffleboard were also proposed as amenities. The proposed plan still includes a multi-use pathway and children's play structure, but the yard shuffleboard has been removed, and a community swimming pool is proposed as an upgraded amenity in its place. The access and interconnectivity proposed to adjacent parcels with the proposed plan is substantially the same as the previous plan. Proposed plat consists of 200 single-family residential buildable lots, two multifamily residential buildable lots, 14 common lots, three common driveway lots, and one park lot that may be a portion of a future city neighborhood park, and that is the one right here at the northwest corner of the site. And then there is a city well lot that's proposed on the next lot over right here. Total area of the plat is 52.46 acres of land in the R8 medium-density residential zone and the R40 high-density residential zoning districts. Proposed single-family residential lots range in size from 4,200 to 9,600 square feet with an average lot size of 4,692 square feet and a gross density of 4.89 units per acre. The project is proposed to develop in four phases with the multifamily residential developing last. Access is proposed via the extension of West Harris Street, a collector street from South Meridian Road, State Highway 69. A collector street is also planned along the west boundary of the site in accord with the master street map. Public streets are proposed for internal access within the single-family residential portion of the development, with stub streets at the project's south and east boundaries for future extension. Two driveway connections are proposed between the single-family residential and multifamily residential portions of the development for interconnectivity, and those are, if you can see my pointer, right here. A driveway is required at the east boundary of the multifamily residential development to the future development, which is Stapleton subdivision to the east for emergency access. A total of 8.97 acres or 17.1% of qualified open space is proposed in excess of the minimum UDC standards, which is 10%, and includes a 1.69 acre common area that I previously mentioned at the northwest corner of the site that may be included with common area and adjacent developments, Biltmore Estates and Brundage Estates, and consolidated for a city neighborhood park. Site amenities are proposed as previously mentioned that exceed the minimum standards. The Sundell and the Tumblr laterals which cross this site are proposed to be piped with development. The Williams Northwest Gas Pipeline, as I mentioned, bisects this site and lies within a 75-foot wide easement, and that is this green space right through here where the pathway is located. All development within the easement is required to adhere to the most current standards in the Williams Gas Pipeline Developers Handbook. The applicant has provided the city with a lease on a parcel of land within Lot 1, Block 9, for a future city well, and that, as I mentioned, is in this lot right here. The well lot shall be created and deeded to the city at the time of final plating. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown, demonstrating the quality of homes and architecture proposed. Because facades of homes adjacent to collector streets will be highly visible, elevations are required to incorporate articulation to break up monotonous wall planes and roof lines visible from the public rideaway. Written testimony has been received from Becky McKay, the applicant's representative. She is in agreement with the staff report except for one change to Condition A10 in Section 9, and that is to change the timing for dedication of the well lot to the city from at the time of final plating to after recording of the final plat, and staff is in agreement with this change. Written testimony was also received from Jennifer Pedrally. She is not in favor of the increased density proposed due to already a lot of traffic in the area and school overcrowding, and she believes impact fees are too low to support all of the development in Meridian. And lastly, written testimony was received from Victoria Laidlaw. She wants to ensure the developer will still install a six-foot-tall fence on top of a berm across the entire southern end of the development adjoining her property to ensure crops on her property won't be ruined due to trespassing, and that an underground pipe is installed to accommodate drainage from her property to replace the existing ditch that runs across the site that serves that purpose. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Missures, any questions for staff? With that, can we get the applicant to come forward?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions. Welcome, new members. Just to kind of give you a history, oh, address 1029 North Rosario, Meridian. I've been a planner in the Treasure Valley for 30 years now, so I've been around through many administrations, many plans, zoning commissions. Meridian is definitely my favorite jurisdiction. I've done more projects here than just about anybody, and it's always a pleasure to come and be before you and help the city build the best communities that we can. So, so appreciate you giving your time and your effort to this goal of making Meridian a better place to live, and welcome. I have a PowerPoint here. So, the subject property that we're talking about is Gray Cliff Estates, as Sonya indicated. The property is approximately 42 and a half acres. It lies right here. You can see it there. This is State Highway 69. This is Harris Street, right here, and Harris Street is the half-mile, mid-mile collector. It is intended that this will be a signalized intersection. Then there's Biltmore Estates that's located here, which is also my client's, Star Development. And then this is a collector roadway that we built through Biltmore. It goes on out through Kentucky Ridge and down to Victory Road. So, let me switch to the next one. This kind of gives you an idea of what's around us. There's Meridian Heights subdivision. That was developed in the 70s and the 80s. This particular subdivision was not connected to Central Sewer, but had sewer lagoons and had a community well system. Kentucky Ridge was constructed, and they were placed on that community system. Mr. Centers and myself worked with the city and their staff and the Meridian Heights and Kentucky Ridge people for two years to work out an arrangement so that Mr. Centers could take those ponds offline, connect them to the city, Central Sewer and Victory, and connect them to the central water system. They had two wells in Meridian Heights. Both of them had high levels of arsenic that did not meet the current DEQ requirements, so it was important that they get central services. The problem that was encountered with them is they did not have the funds to pay for all of the water and sewer hookup fees. So, my client, Star Development, paid all of the sewer hookup fees for this development in Meridian Heights and Kentucky Ridge so that they could connect to the city of Meridian Sewer, which was a great endeavor and at a significant cost. That obviously allowed us to bring the sewer and the water up through the property just to the north of us in Biltmore Estates, and we brought the sewer in, and we platted this Biltmore here, and these lots range from like 8,500 to 20,000 square feet. Then Mr. Centers also owns Brundage Estates, which is located here. Those were also larger lots. When we brought in Gray Cliff, he had acquired that from another developer, and we, the sewer comes up through Kentucky Ridge. One of the things that the city came to us and they said, "We need a well in this section. It's integral that we get a well." Mr. Centers provided a 99-year lease. When we plat this lot here, Well 32 will be deeded to the city. That well is online. The city brought a 12-inch water main up Meridian Road and down Harris Street and then connected to the new well. The other thing that was part of the comprehensive plan was a neighborhood park was designated in this section. So, what we decided to do is through the three developments that Mr. Centers owned, that we would contribute different portions of the project to make a neighborhood park. And so, that's what you see right here in this middle area. Now, when we initially did Gray Cliff, that was 2015. 2015 was a whole different animal as far as cost. Cost for materials, cost for construction, cost for engineering. We had some smaller lots in here than we had in Biltmore and Brundage Estates, but as costs have escalated, Mr. Centers became very concerned about the fact that the costs were exceeding the ability of a lot of the buyers as far as to build within or purchase within his community. So, we brought Gray Cliff back through, as Sonya indicated. We added about 15 lots, brought it back through the process, and then prices jumped dramatically. And so, he came back to us and said, you know, "We've got to do something to help these young couples with young families be able to afford a good, quality, custom home." And so, we came up with this particular design, and like Sonya indicated, this is medium-density residential, which is three to eight dwelling units per acre for the single-family portion. This portion up here is our 40 high-density residential. And another thing that kind of changed the, the character of this area is the Stapleton subdivision came in just to the east of us, and this was intended to be a mixed-use development. It was going to be primarily highway commercial. They were going to have kind of a multi-use or a multifamily component. That just didn't ever materialized, and so then it was sold, and they came in with an R15 zoning, and they, their density was, I think it was 6.73 dwelling units per acre. They had lots at 3,200 square feet with an average lot size of 4,200. So, that made Mr. Centers, and he said, you know, my word, you know, we started out with homes and lots and home prices in the $350,000 range, and just over a handful of years, over the past four years, he said, "The home, a home that we built for 350 is now 700," and so we're seeing that, that we've got to do something different. Based on the amount of land that he has, the 300-plus acres, he said, "We've got to have a little better diversity." So, that's why we're here this evening, to obviously provide diversity. We still have a preliminary plat that is in effect, but we met with the staff and we talked to them, and they said, you know, "We see where you're coming from." And so, we initially have approval for 136 single-family lots, and we're asking for approval of 200 lots total. We're leaving the multifamily. That will have to come back in as a conditional use, so we're not asking for any approvals on that. We just show that as two multifamily lots. One of the things I told Mr. Centers is I said, "Well, you know, if you're, if you're going to increase your density," which was 3.23 dwelling units per acre, where we're allowed four to eight, I said, "You need to beef up your amenities. You need to beef up your open space, because if we're going to increase the number of residents within this community, we need to provide amenities for them." So, one of the things that we have within this project that has always been a part of the project is this is a multi-use pathway that's shown in your pathway plan with the Parks Department. That's a 10-foot multi-use pathway runs through there. The Williams Pipeline's under it. It's 75 feet wide. We will install that path and grass along with it. Any trees that are required along that pathway, we'll have to plant into the neighborhood I think we had a significant, a significant amount of multi-use pathway throughout the whole project. It runs for probably three-quarters of a mile. In the project, we also decided we're going to have a central open space here with a pool facility, playground. Since it is on a corner lot with a flanking street and a fronted street, we are agreeing to put wrought iron around that park so that when the kids are playing, if a two-year-old takes off, they can't run out into the street. We also have open space along the collector of Harris Street, which will eventually lead out and connect to Linder. So, this whole section will have a north-south collector that will go, that goes Kentucky Way, that comes in and tees into Harris. Then Harris will go out to Linder, and then we have a southern collector called Oakbrier that will go on and head down to Amity. So, this particular section will have a continuous collector system as shown in the master street map and as shown in your transportation plan. We have micropaths within the project that lead, obviously, to shortcuts over to our primary amenities. My plan was to have some benches put along the pathway so people could rest and kind of, as they walk their dogs or as they jog. I think that's, that's, we got another pedestrian pathway located here. This was the previous plan that we had, so looking at it, there's not a heck of a lot of difference other than we ended up internalizing and putting that, that central amenity within the project here. You can see the portion of this project that will be part of the neighborhood park. We did take a concept plan to your Parks Commission back in 2018. The Parks Commission looked at our pathway networks. This is an extension of that multi-use pathway. You can see it comes through the park, and then will drop down and run along that Williams Pipeline going out to Meridian Road. The Parks Commission liked this concept. They gave us a couple of different examples on how they'd like this concept to be laid out. We showed them how many ballfields could be placed in here, and my client indicated to the Parks Commission, he did make a commitment, "I will install sprinklers as per your standards. I will go ahead and I will hydroseed it. I will green it up. I will maintain it until such time as the Parks Department takes over ownership of the development," or of the park, sorry. So, the Parks Commission said they were in favor of it. We have not entered into agreement with them because obviously this is kind of a component park that we will be working on doing sections of it as we progress forward. This just is the preliminary plat. This kind of just shows you the, the street network, the collector roadways, as I said, Harris, Oakbrier. We've got interconnectivity that will go into Stapleton for secondary access. I did read the comment from Joe Bonjorno, the fire marshal. We have Station Number 6 that is under construction right now at Overland Road, just west of Linder. On their website, it says they hope to be operational within 20, or March of 2020. So, right now, this property would be served by, I think it's Station Number 4. So right now, this property would be served by, I think it's station number four, which is located at Eagle, just north of Victory. But the response times will be decreased significantly once that Overland-Linder station comes online. And we have not designed this project, so there will be a lag time between when houses go up, so that station should be online. This is the pool facility, kind of a, just a rendering of what it would look like. We also have a photograph of a similar pool facility. So we'll kind of take the, the best features of both. There'll be changing rooms, restrooms, a gathering place for the residents. And like I said, we'll fence it with wrought iron fence around the perimeter of that open space, and then there will also be a playground. These are some of the home elevations that L-2 will be building in here. They're custom builders. They've come up with a whole line of, of different homes. This one you can see is kind of a more modern with a three-car garage. This one also has a three-car garage and an RV bay. These will fit on some of the larger lots that we have. Here you can see a, a two-car, more modern type style dwelling unit that will fit on these lots. As Sonya indicated, our lots are a minimum of forty-two hundred square foot with an average of four thousand six hundred and ninety-two. And our, our density is still well within the parameters of that medium density at four point eight nine dwelling units per acre. Here's another two-story with a two-car garage. And then this is, this is another three-car. We feel that obviously we have a, we have a good project here. We'll be building seventeen hundred and twenty linear feet of multi-use pathway. We'll be donating parkland and we will be obviously doing our part to make this a community that others can benefit from. Do you have any questions? Oh, and Cody will come after me. He'll have his three minutes. Sorry, Cody. He has a PowerPoint. He's their, their operations and sales expert. And I wanted him to talk to you about the buyers that they're seeing and why we need to change this product, this project at this juncture.
Thanks, Becky. I do have a couple of questions and then we'll open it up to see if Commission has any other questions for you two. So I know Fire had some concerns about response times initially, but also about there's just being one access off of Harris initially. And they had made a comment about being limited to a certain number of lots until there's a secondary access. Can you just talk to us a little bit about timing of the development and phasing and what your expectations are there and how that would lay out?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I have, I have talked to Joe. He did comment in our pre-application conference about, we have, we have obviously an access here to Oakbrier, a second access here to Harris. However, based on the International Fire Code, they require a secondary access that is half the diagonal distance of the property. So what we will do is we will build a secondary access that Stapleton has a condition of approval, that they will make a connection to us along this boundary, and we will build a secondary access to them. If their secondary access is not available, then we'll go ahead and build our, another secondary access that comes out to Harris. And then we have Kentucky Ridge coming in. So Harris is not the only ingress and egress into this project. Kentucky Way goes down to Victory.
Thank you, Becky.
Oh, and he wants a, what is it, an AED at the pool facility. That was one thing he did ask for.
Great. On the phasing, I know you had a, a map up there that showed what the phasing would look like for the project and how it would develop out. When would the green belt pathway and the park system be created in that?
Madam Chair, the first phase was going to be kind of in this area here. We obviously have to create, you know, kind of a loop system. And I indicated to my client that the city prefers that the central amenities be built either with the first or the second phase at the latest. He said that was fine with him. As far as the green belt, we were going to build that, I think with the multifamily. That was what we were talking about, so we could make those interconnections. That was what was discussed. As far as the parks, when we proceed forward with this, then we will get with Elroy and proceed to get a, a agreement, a Parks Agreement in place to specify the timing. What the Parks Commission told us when we went before them in two thousand and eighteen, that their focus was going to be on the regional park, just south of Amity. And all of their dollars were going to be allocated to that park and getting it online because they needed another regional park desperately in Southern Meridian. And so we agreed, that's why Mr. Centers agreed to, you know, obviously, you know, donate the land and install some of these improvements, green it up, get it so it's usable as quickly as possible. But I think we're kind of, we're kind of market-driven, you know, as far as how fast we progress. And, and affordability is exactly what we're trying to provide here.
Any indication you can give us on how long it would be before the multifamily component would come forward?
My recommendation to Mr. Centers was not to wait until the project is built out because that happened at Locksaw Falls that I did with the Selway Apartments. It's happened with other projects, when you build the multifamily last, when that conditional use comes through, even though it's in the development agreement, even though this is approved for two hundred and twenty-four multifamily units. Everybody claims they didn't know it was going to happen and you guys have standing room only. So my recommendation to Mr. Centers was, don't put that off until the end. Obviously, we need to get that signal built at Harris Street. We've already constructed a turn lane in Meridian Road, which is a southbound turn lane into Harris. We also widened the Harris intersection. We couldn't do any more until Stapleton comes through and they build their side of Harris, so then we can get a full build out. We also worked with Ada County Highway District to, we ran the backbone of their fiber optic from Amity to Harris and all the way down to Victory for the future signal. And in the Ada County Highway District report, they have us participating in our proportionate share of that signal. So we have to trust fund with the first phase for our proportionate share of the signal. So does Stapleton. So does Kavanaugh Ridge across, on the east side. They want to get that signal in when it meets that warrant. Right now, there's a little over five hundred trips on Harris per day, so we can't install them until it meets the warrants. But that is a priority, that we get that, we get that done. And as soon as that trigger point is hit on the trips, then ACHD will have those monies and then whoever triggers it will install it and they can tap those funds.
Thank you. That's all I have, but other questions from Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner McCarville?
Becky, can you tell me, I know the high density is not under our consideration tonight, but just, can you tell me, are they intending to use the same amenities since you've got the interconnectivity there? Or are they going to have their own set of amenities?
Madam Chair, Commissioner McCarville? No, they will have their own amenities. That's what you see right here.
That's what I thought.
They would have their, their own clubhouse, their own pool facility. In addition to the subdivision requirements for a minimum of ten percent, we have seventeen percent, they will have to have, based on their square footages, anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty square feet of open space beyond that open space requirement for the subdivision to accommodate the multifamily.
Any other questions from the Commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pittsir?
Yes, I was wondering, how do you dress the, the south side with the six fence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner?
Pittsir.
Pittsir, okay. Yeah, I got it. Yes, I have met with Victoria Laidlaw and talked to her on the phone on a couple of occasions. And we are in agreement to install fencing along the southern boundary. We also, the Sundell lateral traversed her property. It comes in right here and then it arcs through our property. And so we worked with Victoria and we piped the Sundell lateral on her property. And so it has now been piped with a thirty-six inch all the way up to the north.
Thank you.
And Victoria, one of her comments was she wanted a playground in the middle of the project, so we do have a playground and play equipment.
Commissioner Seal, did you have a question?
I do. There's, when I was reading through the ACHD report, the Oakbrier, where they go from a forty-foot to a ten-foot right-of-way, that looks like it's going to pinch right into where you have some landscaping and trees and things like that. Is there anything that can be done to help with that so that doesn't just disappear? I mean, if, if I were living here and I had trees, obviously, on the west side and all of a sudden they're chopped down, that changes the dynamic of my backyard.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Seal, I, I did talk with Paige over at Ada County Highway District, and she basically drew that diagram the opposite of what it's supposed to be. So what the, the Sundell comes in right here and we, we piped it in that landscape area just, and we made it wider so we didn't have any trees over the landscaped area. Then we allocated ten feet of right-of-way. So what happens with Oakbrier is it comes in and then it angles down. It does not take out the landscaping and the other forty feet is on the other side. So there's fifty feet of right-of-way. You can kind of see it here. And then it's going to come down. See how the Sundell comes in here? So we picked it up. Whoa.
I can really see it now.
We picked it, yeah. We picked it up right here. So what I told ACHD, for this collector, it's going to have to go on the far side of the Sundell, on the west side, to go down to Amity. So it's going to kind of veer to the west a little bit, but still stay close to that half-mile alignment. And so I explained that to Paige, that she'd reversed that, and she said, "Sorry." And I have a meeting with her tomorrow to show her what I'm talking about because she wasn't quite tracking over the phone. So I have a meeting with them at one tomorrow.
That makes sense. Question for the, right now, there's single access for water. That was one of the concerns that was listed in there. Generally, there's going to be, you know, redundant hookups that are in there. And, and the reason I'm asking that question is because of the concerns from the Fire Department as far as access coming in, response and timing, even when the, the Overland Station comes online, so.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Seal, there's a twelve-inch water main that comes in down Harris Street. We are in the upper Pressure Zone Five. Below us, at the lower elevation, is Pressure Zone Four. So the city took, they went down Amity and they took from, connected to a well at Amity, brought it down Amity, then they brought it up Meridian Road, and then they brought it down Harris because the Meridian Heights, they could not get the minimum fire flow without doing that. Then we hooked into the twelve-inch in Victory and brought it up through the Hanson Property. So if I pop, let's see. So there was, there was a twelve-inch in Victory and we brought it up through the Hanson Property and brought it over and up to Harris. Then there's a second feed that comes down Meridian Road and comes down Harris that we've connected to that twelve-inch. So there are two, there are two accesses. There's a pressure relief valve, a PRV, because this is the lower Zone Four. And then we have the well that's online. The master water model shows that in Oak, what was it? Oak?
Brier.
Brier. In Oakbrier, there will be a twelve-inch that comes down and then connects to Amity. So that is the, that is the other connection. And then there'll be a fourth connection because there's a twelve-inch water main in Linder that then there's, will be a PRV and there'll be a connection there. And I think the city was going to take that twelve all the way around the horn here. So we have multiple opportunities for water. But the big thing is that well thirty-two is online. And we made sure because we could, we could only develop a certain number of homes in our first and second phase in Pressure Zone Four. Pressure Zone Five had to come online and it needed another well.
Madam Chair, just follow-on question. The Harris Street, as it goes through to Linder, when will that be completed?
The Highway District, obviously, we're going to be taking it right here to the mid-mile with Gray Cliff. And then in Brundage Estates, we would take it over to Linder. Now, the sewer for Brundage is not the same as Gray Cliff. It comes in down Linder. So the thought was we would connect, we would start from the west and work our way to the east to interconnect the two. ACHD did not, they, they placed a condition on me. They did not want this interconnection until the signal goes in because they didn't want to create a situation where it was exceeding the capacity of this intersection. Secondly, there's a capacity issue at Victory and Linder as far as this intersection because there are three homes that are right there on that, right at the intersection that will most likely have to be purchased for them to expand the intersection. So in our extensive, we've had multiple traffic studies on Brundage, Biltmore, Gray Cliff. We've updated our studies. ACHD has trigger points based on the number of lots where then they have us update our traffic study and evaluate if we need to build more of Harris or if we need to install the signal. So there, on these larger projects, they're, they, they have stages where they have us relook at what is, what are the volumes on the background traffic and where are we in our development? And so we can keep up with our improvements as we progress through these, these larger projects.
And the reason I asked about the Harris Street, extending that out to Linder partially is for the response time for the Fire Department because the Fire Department's going to be on the corner of Linder. So instead of having to come all the way over into
Correct.
The highway, that would improve the
They would have to come, you're right, you're right, sir. They'd come down, they'd come down Linder, they'd come down Victory, and the quickest way in would be Kentucky Way. So there's a collector Kentucky Way right here, right at the mid-mile, would come right to us. So they'd come here, come over, up Kentucky Way. And this Kentucky Way is constructed all the way to Harris.
Okay, but there's no timing on the, I mean, it sounds like the timing of the light is driven by rooftops or car trips and that is also going to drive when the Harris Street is going to finish extension out to Linder Road. So really, there is, I mean, is, when you speak with ACHD, can you maybe find out what that would be? I, I just have concerns over the, what the Fire Department is concerned with, and I want to make sure we're supporting them in this, you know, making this safe for everybody. Because if, if the fastest way in there is through two different subdivisions on a subdivision street, that, that makes, that makes me pause for concern because if that's my house burning down in there with my family at risk, I definitely don't want the Fire Department to have to take that route.
I think based on their scoring right now with the station number four, we are at seventy-eight percent. And they said their preferred was eighty, so we are at two percent. So by the time these, these homes are built and the new station comes online, we'll be well with, within their preferred response time, even with Kentucky Way. It is a collector roadway. It is intended to bring traffic up from Victory up to the center of this section to Harris. So it's not like there will be meandering through a circuitous route. It's, it's a pretty straight shot, right? You can see Kentucky Way comes straight, wow dang it, sorry, comes straight up right to there.
Any other follow-up questions, Commissioner Seal? Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Grove?
Madam Chair. Becky, you mentioned that there is going to be a housing diversity because of the increased number of houses from the initial, or from two thousand and eighteen. What is the, what is your intended price point for, for that?
I think I'll leave that up to Cody. He's the specialist, and that's why I wanted you to hear from him this evening because he can obviously tell you what's happening. you to hear from him this evening because he can obviously tell you what's happening out there in the field with these buyers and what the price point is going to be. So I'll leave that up to him if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last follow-up questions? Let Becky sit down. Oh, we might have one more for you. Commissioner Pittsir?
All right, thank you. So the Collector Road that you have going through Kentucky, how wide is that street? Are you saying it's a connector?
This Collector Street here, Kentucky Way, we built Kentucky Way at a 36 back-to-back. That is a Collector width, 36 feet from back a curb to back a curb.
Do you have any front-facing homes on those roads?
I do not. I do not. There are, there are a couple in, there are just a handful in Kentucky Ridge, but I have no front-on housing. So I have, I have a 36 back-to-back, and then I have 20-foot landscaping and detached sidewalks. And in the Graycliff project, we have all detached sidewalks with an eight-foot landscape strip. So we have, pedestrians will be, will be separated from the curb safely away from the roadway network.
And Graycliff, uh, Graycliff has what's nice?
33 foot from back a curb to back a curb. That is Ada County Highway District's standard street section for a local residential street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have folks signed in to testify?
Madam Chair, I believe the gentleman that Becky was with would like to speak, but otherwise, we don't have any signed up.
So if you want to come forward and put your name and address on the record, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, good evening. My name is Cody Stoger, address 1157 La Rieda, Middleton. Get my PowerPoint pulled up, Sonya. No problem. So I'm representing L2 Construction, which is the builder for Graycliff Estates. I want to provide a little bit of context for everything that Becky just presented in her presentation and why we're kind of moving from a, from our current approved designation to a smaller lot designation. So I wanted to provide a little bit of market statistics, maybe some things that you guys haven't heard or thought about, and kind of the reason we're moving in that direction. I'll give you the Cliff Notes version because I know I don't have long. First of all, we're L2 Construction, second-generation Treasure Valley Developer/Builder Team. We're, we're all Treasure Valley natives and residents. We care about what happens in this valley, and I think that shows. We're committed to building beautiful, solid homes to meet the needs of our growing community. So these are some interesting statistics that I wanted to bring, bring to you guys so you kind of see why we're doing what we're doing. Meridian Idaho median household income right now is $68,131. You can go to any lender, you can go to any website, and they'll tell you this is how much, this is how much mortgage you can afford at that income. And the scary part about that is, right now, the median sales price is up close to $400,000. This fluctuates every month. Last month, it was over 430. So this fluctuates quite a bit. This is driven by, by one main factor, and that's the inventory. We're low on inventory all the time, just because we have a massive influx of people moving here, and that's what's driving the low inventory, therefore shooting the price up really high. So this, this is another interesting statistic. This was a Housing and Urban Development study that they did last year. Basically, they're just telling us, hey, you guys need more homes. You need more single-family homes, and you need more apartments. You need more homes in order to keep up with the influx of people that are coming here. So they recommend by the end of 2020, we need 15,050 new homes. Another interesting statistic, Boise University once a year puts on an Idaho Policy Institute Treasure Valley survey where they Treasure Valley, they interview Treasure Valley residents about transportation, housing, and taxes. Two biggest takeaways from that were 67.5 percent of respondents were very concerned about the increased cost of living associated with the growth in the Treasure Valley. That's no secret to any of us. The other one that I found pretty alarming, majority of people, 66 percent, do not believe that they would be able to find comparable housing that they could afford if they had to leave their current housing. That means people are feeling that pressure of the growth, and we don't want that. So my role is community completion. I'm from contact to contract. It's my job to hold an open house five days a week. I interact with prospective buyers. I qualify the clients, and my most important role is I build buyer profiles. I tell the developer exactly who's coming in to visit. And so with that, the needs are pretty simple. We need more affordable housing. How are we going to get that? We're going to get that with more inventory. That's what we're trying to do. And to address your question, Commissioner Grove, we're shooting for the 320 to 400 starting price range. Looks like I'm out of time.
I'll give you another minute to wrap up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're fine.
Thank you very much. So overall, our goal is quality, safe, and thoughtfully designed communities that offer more options for a larger percent of our residents here in Meridian. The fact of the matter is people just can't afford new homes, and we want to give them that option. It's our, it's our opportunity to, to provide them with more affordable housing here in Meridian. And they want local and affordable. People come to us because we're local. They know we're local, and they know we don't build 1,000 homes a year. So they come to us because we're local. We're trying to key on this one right here. We're trying to become a little bit more affordable. We want thoughtfully designed communities. We're not just going to throw them together. We care about this city. We care about this project. Unique, modern designs. You saw the mock-ups in Becky's presentation. We don't want cookie cutter, cookie cutter neighborhoods. You get in that 300 to 400 price range, frankly, they all look the same. We're trying to mix things up a little bit. And Southwest Meridian is obviously booming, and people want to be out there. The proximity to the freeway is a big deal. It's still quiet out there. It's still nice, and so we're trying to get more people out that way. And then I'll just read this really quick, if I may. This is our Meridian mission. We grew up here. We live here. Our, as our hometown grows, we're dedicated to maintaining what makes Meridian so special, and that's the community. It's this sense of community that keeps us dedicated to providing a unique home-building experience for the families we serve. On this endeavor, we will always remember that new homes are a profession, but forging relationships along the way is our passion. We care about our clients. We care about their homes. We will strive to build communities that meet the needs of and reflect the values and diversity of this great city. So overall, we want to meet the needs of the city, and we want to do that affordably, if you will. And then at the end, I just included some homeowner testimonials here. Says what kind of, what kind of people we are, what kind of product we produce, and just kind of shows how much we care about it. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It looks like we may have somebody else signing up in the back, but is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify on this application or put your comments in? I'm not sure. Are you signing up in the back to, to say a few words? If you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic and saying your name and address for the record, we'd be happy to hear a few comments from you.
My name is Monica Bronson. Thank you. My name is Monica Bronson, 389 West Bloomington, Meridian. I just wanted to express my concern about the Harris Road access. I own a few properties in Meridian Heights, a house in Kentucky Ridge, and Harris Road has, from Meridian Road up to past Bloomington, which is at three streets that were originally part of all the Meridian Heights and one, two, or three versions or sections of it. It has front-facing houses on Meridian Road. I don't know what the projection is for the width of Meridian Road, if they're going to do like a, another road called Harris Road and have a separate road for the residents that are front-facing. Right now, it's a very narrow road, and it's a death trap trying to get onto Meridian Road. So my concern is, if they're going to put a light in, I think the sooner the better. Because there's, with the L2 housing division, subdivision it's gone through, the L2 builders up above, and then the rest of this Graycliffs plus the Stapleton, the amount of traffic on Harris Road is going to be tremendous. And I just am really concerned about the safety. And the people, the people who have front-facing houses, they park their cars on Harris Road. So I don't, I wasn't sure if you were aware of that. But I think it's something to consider on the width of what the proposed Harris Road would be when they're finished, and the light, the signal, and how fast that could be put in.
Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to testify? With that, I'll have Becky, if you have any more words you'd like to say.
I'll be quick, Madam Chair. Nurse of the Commission, Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions. There are, there are a few homes in Kentucky Ridge that do front on Harris, even though it was designated a Collector. In those days, they still allowed some front-on housing. I did a design for the property that became the Stapleton subdivision, and in my design, I shifted Harris a little bit to the south and then created a median so that those properties could back out easily, and then they had curb cuts where they could come back out onto Harris Street. I did the same thing off of, I think it was Duncan Lane and State Street. If you ever drive downstate and you can see those houses, and they kind of have like a private drive, they back into it, then they go out onto Duncan. That's how I had it designed. Now, when Stapleton came through, I didn't do that project, so they are required to widen that out. I, I recommended to ACHD that, you know, they maintain that design because I thought it would be, it would work and protect those existing homes. But I don't believe that's what ACHD approved with Stapleton. So we don't control that east portion of Harris. ACHD is obviously going to have to work with that developer to create a, there's plenty of right-of-way to do that, but they're going to have to work with them to create a safe situation so that those people can easily back out.
Becky, do you know how many front-facing homes are on Harris, off-chance?
My recollection was there were, I thought there were around six. And there, the two that were right at the intersection were the ones that I saw the most problematic because of stacking. And so that's why I thought, you know, creating a, kind of a protected, private drive with a median and then shifting to the south made sense.
Any other questions for Becky at this time? Silence. I think you get to sit down.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. With that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for Graycliff Estates H-2019-0129?
So moved.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, your thoughts, please? Who wants to go first?
Madam Chair. I'll start off with, with what I really like about the, the plans and everything. It seems to be well-thought-out. I like the fact that there's, there's a lot of walking paths and interconnectivity to it. The main walking path that, the large walking path that's going to go in there is going to be a great addition to, I mean, any subdivision to have that would be nice. The fact that there's going to be, you know, essentially a park extension to it is, is really nice. I like the fact that the, you know, they put the forethought into that to have a kind of collection in the middle where, of property that can be donated to the city if, if need be, or just be open to, you know, the residents in this area to be able to use for whatever park experiences they may want to have. The upgraded clubhouse is really nice as well. I mean, the reality, living in our areas, in order to get more affordability, we're probably going to have to see a lot more of this condensed structure that's, that's coming in. I have children that are out looking for houses right now that are, you know, they're more than likely going to move out of the area because the affordability just simply isn't there in Meridian anymore. So that, to me, is, you know, that's kind of sad to me as a parent, but at the same time, I also live in a house whose value has doubled in the last five years. So, you know, it goes both ways, for sure. The, the biggest concern I have with, with the property in general is just the access that's going to be provided for, for fire. That, to me, is, that's a big concern. There are a lot of front-facing houses. I just looked at the Google Earth on this, and there's about 11 front-facing houses off Harris Street as it comes in off of Meridian Road. And there's, on Kentucky, there's also, there's a small section of it that has front-facing houses on both sides of the road as well. So I'm just very concerned about that. I mean, the response time, I think the, the, the sequence in which things are going to be built and the timeline is going to provide for the fire station to be open that's closer. But even with that one being open, it's still below the response time that they like to hit. I mean, we have been informed that that's, you know, a nice-to-have, not a have-to-have. But in looking at the rest of the, you know, looking at the rest of the road structures and the ability for the fire department to respond quickly, I just have a major concern over that. What would help me with that, for sure, is to have some kind of timeline from ACHD that says when Harris is going to come through there. That would make me feel a lot better. But, I mean, we're, we're the city of Meridian and they're Ada County Highway District, so I don't, I don't know if there's a way that we can get around that. But essentially, I mean, it's, it's a really nice project. I think it's very well thought out. I think it's very well laid out. I think it makes great use of the space. But I just have big concerns over the ability for the fire department to, you know, provide the services that they need to provide safely.
Commissioner Seale, I think, I'll give a couple of comments too right now, but I know one thing we'll need to take into consideration was they asked for one modification of the staff report for A-10 Section 9, that they wanted to change the timing of the dedication of the well. I didn't see any big concerns with that. It seemed like staff was fine with that as well. Couple of thoughts before I go back into any concerns. I, I like that there's a regional pathway. I like that there's three neighborhoods contributing to a bigger park. I think that's always nice when you can do that. I also like the addition of the, the pool and clubhouse because I think that makes a nice amenity for the subdivision. As a commission, they, they do have an outstanding preliminary plat that was approved for the 100 and some units, 136 buildable lots, and they're asking for the increase. 200. So just putting that out there. Also, we're not, we're not considering the multifamily component of it tonight. We're just considering the overall concept, and that's why they, they put that in there just to give us a visual. But that will come back before us with a conditional use permit, just so that you're aware of that, too, before they could start building on that. One thought I had was looking at the phasing of it. I would prefer to have the greenbelt pathway constructed before the multifamily goes in, especially if that's aimed to be the last phase of the project. So that would be one consideration I would like to, to look at. Maybe not that it be required with the first phase, but maybe before the completion of the last phase of the subdivision, maybe at the end of Phase 2, something like that. I'd like to see that amenity in there so there's more pathway for people to get around. That was one of my thoughts. I also have some concerns with the access in and out, that there's just one main access off of Harris, and there's certainly some challenges on Harris that will depend on what the neighboring subdivision does with Stapleton, what they come in there. There's not much that this specific property can do to help with that component because it's not really next to their right-of-way, but I don't think ACHD is going to finish out Harris Road until the light's in, and I don't think the light's going to come in until the rooftops come in. So it's kind of a chicken-and-egg situation. So I, I hear your concerns, but I'm not sure that there's much we can do to expedite that process there. Other commissioners ready to give some thoughts? Commissioner Pittsir?
First, the positives. I mean, I really like the design concept, the different style houses, a little modern, you know, not the cookie cutter, all of that. But I, too, have the concerns on the fire, the, the fire issues, the, the connector road that they have going in, it's a 36-wide street, but that's still going through two subdivisions, two, two separate subdivisions. And especially the lower point, portion of this subdivision that doesn't have any egress is, is a big concern for me. The other point, as far as the front-facing The other point, as far as the front-facing homes on Harris Road, you know, I don't see that there's anything that's going to change that. They already have 136 on there currently and really what they're asking for is going to 200. That's not going to change dramatically as far as those 11 houses on that road. But I agree that the pathway needs to probably go in before the apartments just to make this the amenities there for them.
Thank you. Commissioner Grove, any thoughts?
Formulate how to say all of these.
I can come back to.
I like the thought that's gone into this to address affordability issues that, you know, a lot of people my age are struggling with in finding those homes that either their first or second home to be able to find in the area. So I applaud your efforts to address those concerns. I don't see a big difference from 136 to 200 in terms of like how it's laid out. And I see the positives. I'm still learning the access road pieces and all of that. So I'm very interested to hear the rest of the commission's thoughts on these things. So I don't have a lot of input into that aspect. One thing that Becky mentioned in her response to the builders in response to Phase 4, the multifamily, I have heard enough of council meetings and things where having that come in so late in the game can be a problem. So I would encourage you to continue to press on that aspect of it so that it is well-timed to lessen some of the negativity of those builds. Because just as affordability is an issue, you know, there's not a lot of availability for all types of housing at different price points and different styles. So encourage you to continue looking at expediting that process.
Commissioner Grove, one note I think was in the staff report too is that they would have to have some signage that says that this is planned for future apartments too, just to help with that knowledge and awareness. I believe I saw that somewhere in the staff report.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Pitser?
Yes. The other thing I was concerned about was schools. Nobody has addressed schools. This looks to be like it would be a young neighborhood where they would have children. I'm kind of concerned with, I haven't heard anything about what school, how this would affect the schools that we have going in.
Load the school district's send-in log in though. Sonya, do you have easy access to remember what the school district sent in comments on this one?
They did not.
They did not?
That was one of the things that was missing.
Yeah, it's tough when it comes to the school district. It's tough to limit development based on what schools are available. A lot of times, we like to hear from the school district of what capacity is available in neighboring schools. We could certainly ask for more insight to that if we wanted to wait. I was trying to see if there was anything in there, but you said there wasn't anything in there from the schools?
Madam Chair, there wasn't anything in there from West Ada that I saw. And it's something that I always look for and honestly, I'm kind of disappointed that we haven't had it in the last few projects that are out there. It's almost, I mean, I know that they're given the ability to respond and they're not responding. Honestly, I'd like to dig deeper into why that is because to me, that's one of the first things. I look at the fire department, I look at the police department, I look at Ada County Highway District, I look at the school districts. You know, we're kind of out there well sometimes, but at the same time, you know, we want to be as good and thoughtful to those agencies as we possibly can. So, you know, I agree, it's, this is going to be built to be a young neighborhood. So the schools that, you know, 200 homes are going to impact or it's going to be a pretty sizable impact on them, I would imagine, so.
And bus stops, I'm concerned, bus stops on Harris is, would be a concern for me too.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
I know there's no proposed bus stops at this point in the development, but.
Madam Chair?
Madam Clerk?
Just for context, Stapleton subdivision, we did receive information from West Ada School District on that back in November. I can give you numbers for context if you're interested.
That'd be great.
Mary Mack Elementary had an enrollment of 553 at that time. The capacity of the school is 566. That's 1.3 miles away. Victory Middle School, the enrollment is 961. The capacity is 1,000. It's 1.5 miles away from Stapleton. Already in high school, the enrollment was 2,004 and the capacity was 2,400. Again, that was provided to us on November 22nd, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, so, I mean, finally something that's slightly under, instead of grossly over. But, I mean, the fact that they won't build new schools until the ones are overcrowded, until those rooftops are in place. And I know most of this was already, has been on the books for quite some time. This is, we're really just talking about the addition of 70 homes, not
Correct.
200 plus the high density. We've already seen this. I would just comment, I mean, I do think it's very thoughtful. It makes me very sad to see the larger lots going away, but I understand the reason, also having a child who, just in the last two weeks, has been making offers on homes, trying to buy his first home. And it is very disheartening to see, you know, what they're having to go through to get their first homes and some of the quality that's out there. So I appreciate, even though that the lots are smaller, that there's still going to, there's still consideration for good quality in somebody's first home. I appreciate the additional amenities. And I would agree that the pathway, I'd like to see that in a little sooner. And I guess, maybe I didn't hear things the same way as everybody did, but I thought I heard about with, in respect to the fire response time, maybe I heard it differently, that once the firehouse goes online on Overland, that they'll be well within it, which is at the end of next month. So I'm not sure, I mean, for us to second-guess. And maybe I heard, was it not until Harris goes in? It's just, it's with the addition of that firehouse on Overland, at the end of March, they'll be way within their desired response time. So I guess I'm not having quite the issue with that.
I'm not having the same heartburn about the fire as much either because I think, I agree that once the new station's online, they'll have the accessibility. We could certainly put a condition in there that says we want the applicant to work with the fire district to make sure that they've got the appropriate access points that would make them feel comfortable. Because I know there was a comment in the staff report about how many lots they'd be limited to until there was a point where there was secondary access. But we could certainly put a note in there endorsing that we want them to work at the fire district on safety and access. Again, with the school questions that we were talking about too, it's, I think we probably didn't get a comment on this because they were already approved prior for the 133 lots and the multifamily component to it. So it's tough to condition projects based on school numbers because as Commissioner McCarville stated, they typically will, they put this into their plan of what developments are coming forward. And once the, once the schools start reaching their capacities, then they start planning for future uses as needed. But it's tough to.
I appreciate that.
Another chicken-and-egg, unfortunately.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Seale?
Looking at the, essentially looking at the layout of the roads and the Kentucky Way as it comes through, I mean, just looking at the trip traffic that's on the different roads. And you've got, you actually have more trips that are coming through on Kentucky Way than are coming through on Harris Street, which means that nobody wants to try and jump out on Meridian Road without a signal out there. And I don't blame them. But I think this is just going to add kind of fuel to that fire where most people out of this are going to take Kentucky Way up and out. I really, I mean, just because of the fact that that main road coming in is Harris Street and it doesn't have a signal and there's no timeline behind it, I just have, I have big reservations about this, just from a safety standpoint and traffic standpoint. And, I mean, because as we've all seen before, I mean, as people start to move in and they start to run through the other subdivisions and that creates safety issues for the people that live in there and the kids that are running around in there as well. So I just, that Harris Street being so undeveloped and not having a signal there is causing me major heartburn.
One more comment just to reiterate too, that they've already been approved for the 133 lots. So they're, or the 136, I'm sorry. Their request is to move that up to 200. So we're looking at the difference there that we're looking to approve tonight or recommend approval of. So I think this development would go forward regardless. It's just a matter of do we want to give them consideration to let them do the more affordable-priced product and blend in a few more products there with the new amenities that they've proposed as well? Or do we want to send it to council and ask them to stay with the original plat?
Madam Chair? Commissioner McCarville?
I would be in support of allowing the 200 lots. That is what's in front of us this evening. It's all, the whole game is chicken-and-egg. I mean, you don't get the stoplight until you have the rooftops there. So, I mean, until the traffic demands it. So it's just what we face all the time with a community that's growing as we are. There's always construction and there's always more traffic coming.
I think I would tend to agree with the way that they've laid out the plat, the additional amenities that they've provided, especially if we condition getting that greenbelt pathway in a little bit earlier. I don't know, Sonya, could you load the map that Becky had put up for us that shows what the phasing was proposed to look like? Just so we can get a better context of that? It was towards the end. Maybe not. It was right before the pictures, I think, actually. That one right there. It looks like Phase 3 would be the final piece that touches that greenbelt pathway, but the first phase and second phase would be the western boundary. I don't know what the commissioner's thoughts on where to put the timing in, but maybe we could condition that the pathway's put in at the end of Phase 2 so that way it's ahead of Phase 3 coming in.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think you stated that incorrectly. Phase 1 is this piece right here. It's a very small print. I doubt you can see it. It does not include the pathway. Phase 2 is down here and Phase 3 is right here. So Phases 1 and 3 are about the pathway that's proposed in Phase 4. Thank you.
Thanks for the correction. Any other comments, commissioners?
Madam Chair? So are you, what's your thought on the pathway, end of 2 or 3?
I think it would be my preference to see the pathway come in at the end of Phase 2, just so that the pathway could be complete when Phase 3 gets starting to be built. That's my thought.
Are we ready for a motion?
Certainly, always ready for a motion.
Commissioner McCarville?
Madam Chair, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the City Council. File number H-2019-0140 is presented in the staff report for the hearing date of February 6th, 2020, with the following modifications, that the pathway be completed at the end of Phase 2 and in agreement with staff's agreement on Section A-10, or A-10, Section 9. Corrections that were stated in staff.
One correction to your motion, that is application number 2019-0129.
29. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, that was Nick. Did you have another comment you wanted to make? Okay. The motion that stands is for construction of pathway at the end of Phase 2 and for the modifications requested by the applicant for A-10, Section 9, with the dedication of the well changed to after recording a final plat. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, are we not going to put anything in about them working with the fire district as a condition?
Would you like to modify your motion to include anything about the fire?
I believe they're in there. I believe it's stated in there that it's going to be fine by the end of March, before this is ever even under construction.
There are some conditions in the staff report that they have to meet fire requirements. Does the second still stand?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
We can vote.
Okay, we can take a vote.
Still have major concerns, so.
All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Motion passes. I think I just need one more motion for the night.
Madam Chair? Commissioner McCarville?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.